Settle.
Good.
Good evening, welcome to the Hillbrook Planning Board two thousand uh October eleventh two thousand sixteen. Um we'll get started with the the meeting. The first thing that's on our agenda here is the property at one seventy seven dash one eighty one South Franklin Street. Um we're very close of having everything in order there. And there's a little bit of work that needs to be done, so we're hoping to get it over to Sean uh later on this week and maybe have him get it back to us um uh later on, hopefully by the end of the week, so um so we'll kinda hold off on any of that information. And then we have to have our decision in or or the conditions in by October twentieth, so um so hopefully we can get that back from Sean by the end of the week and kinda go from there.
By the end of next week.
Um now we'll start with some of the informal um uh informal things here on our agenda, and the first one here that's uh seven seventy seven uh Plymouth Street, the uh the Dalton American Legion post one thirty seven. So I think Paul's here, took care to give us a little informal that he's looking to do there and.
Yes. So what I um probably put you guys with the application, sorry. Um what we were planning on doing was moving, well we have no occupancy down in the basement, so um and you know it's such a big overhead and cost with the electric and gas and everything, they keep the entire upstairs. For the Legion bar, we were looking to lease the bigger portion of the upstairs and move the Legion bar to the front function room area. So it would be um thirty eight hundred square feet and then they would have the common area of the bathrooms and the in the main foyer. And when we uh submitted a building permit to the building inspector, he had thought that this was a change in use and suggested that we come to the planning board with an application.
Okay. Um so I think at this point um if anyone has any comments? Um.
No, I'm good.
So I think at this point what we'll do is we'll get back to you as far as setting up um some of the fee structure that's has to be uh set up. Um and what we'll do is probably by you know middle or end of next week, we'll have a letter out to you and some of the things that need to be done as far as setting up uh uh 'cause it's gonna be a change of use, so we have to have a hearing. We have to notice um all the abuddies and all of that, um so we'll have a list of things that need to be done and we'll probably we've got a few things that we need to do this week. Um but probably by the end of next week, we'll have kind of a list of items that need to be done um and kinda go from there.
Now with the um change of use, I'm just curious 'cause there's like there's several different definitions like in codes and everything. Um how does the planning board define like change of use? I I know like the architectural access board has their own definition and there's the building code definition and.
Yeah, and and I could be completely wrong about this and we have a board, but um I think we'll look at the plans, look what we're what you're exactly trying to do. Um and uh there's some rules and regulations that we have, then we'll probably be sent over to our engineer and figure out those things. Um and that's like during that hearing process.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So it's basically just a subdivision of a of the building in a sense.
Yeah, it's it it's still, yeah, exactly. It's you could call it one and two or A and B.
Right.
It'd just be the American Legion in the front and then another tenant behind it. So this would be a bar restaurant in the back, literally you know proposed, literally public house, and then in the front would be the American Legion bar. And which makes more sense um space-wise anyway, because that way it would give you know the American Legion, it would it would give you know rental income and then also the front room is it's more functional as far as the amount of members that come in and patronize and are eating and conditioning the entire back part of it, so.
Okay, alright. Yeah, so you should probably hear from us um obviously not this week, but toward the end of next week, we'll get something out to you.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um next on our agenda is uh twenty uh Cedar Crest Road. Um I think Dave's here, he was here.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
I don't know, a couple of months ago or whatever, and he's looking to just subdivide the land and kinda figure out what's going on there, so.
Right.
For a a little bit of history, John, this this quick goes for her before, but uh this house was built nineteen fifty by my parents. And uh my wife and I owned a big old house in Duxbury that we even didn't get out of. We had planned to move into it. But in the last year, my mother is uh living with us and developed Alzheimer's and will need to be put in an institution. So we decided to sell the house or had to move into it in an attempt to raise as much funds as we could. It came with nine acres. And uh we thought that we would be fine, and it turns out we weren't quite as fine as we had thought. We brought three developers in at the advice and we had wonderful advice from the board in the spring. And they said it's a real nice piece of land, but it's landlocked and we're not interested because we wanted money we needed to put into it. So we were forced to to realize that the the land had no additional value whatsoever according to Robert Slickleber and other people we talked to. So uh we are going to be putting it on the market for two hundred fifty thousand dollars and we have um our neighbor Jim Day who's right next to it. It would would benefit us to some degree, would certainly benefit him down the road if we could sell the land to him. And that's why I'm here tonight. I have a plan showing you um what we wanna do. I have an this is I have a plan so you can actually look at it. And what's going to be in question is two lines. This little piece of land here, which is down below, this line here.
It's the exact same plan, so you can all be looking at it.
What's in question here is um my parents originally owned this piece of land. And what we are proposing is to put a line back here, create a lot here which is one acre. The remainder of the land will be sold in two lots to Jim Day. What's in question here is is this lot um okay, does it have enough frontage? The original line came right up here, but this little triangle here is is the change from the original plan in nineteen fifty. I'll show you this in a minute. Here is the plan. And you can see, let's see here, this little piece of land right here, this is up top here, is the change. So there's really very little change in the frontage, not a significant change in the size of the lot, but it does have a one acre lot.
So Dave, you're looking to get one house bought out of this?
We're not looking to get any house bought out of it.
Yeah, okay.
We're looking.
It's just, yeah, 'cause you you know I I felt kinda bad 'cause last time you were here, I felt like I'd never seen the property and I go down there and everything and I and I was like
Yeah.
okay, you know.
It's a beautiful piece of land.
It it is, but it's it's if you wanna go skiing.
That's exactly right. We have a very reputable.
So when I when I saw it, you know after the meeting, I went down there the next day and I saw it, I'm saying, yeah, and and I felt like you know maybe a little bit overzealous about different
Right, and you were and you were right.
loss of buildings and stuff, you know, so.
Yeah, if you're when when we talked to developers, they said we could put a house there, but the site development would be so expensive that we could never sell the house for what it's worth.
But even the street even the street coming in off of South Franklin uh North Franklin Street was
Disaster.
Yeah, you know, so I mean I felt like when you were in before, it was I felt like you were looking at like four lots or five lots, I'm saying
Yeah.
I don't see that happening, you know, so, okay.
And it didn't happen, and uh we were very pleased to get good advice. You certainly set us in the right direction by going to look for people.
And I hope you didn't have to go out and spend a lot of money, but it's good to have a good plan here.
But there was one viable lot, correct?
Um
Out of
There would have been.
Yeah.
The developer that came and said, yeah, that's a nice lot.
Yeah.
But because it's on s severely sloping land.
Yeah.
You know, we're not gonna be able to build a four hundred fifty thousand dollar house here, no one will buy it.
Right.
Didn't happen. And tha- and now under this plan, what happens is that beautiful field that's in front of Jim's house and my house will be preserved, which is what we always loved about it.
Yeah, I think that's what you had mentioned in the last meeting, that you know you wanted to kinda keep it a nice resort back there per se, you know.
Yeah. It feels like you I uh spent a lot of time living in Maine and uh it feels like Maine sometimes, which is fine, but I mean
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So I'm not sure the next step in this. I I know we originally thought this would be done in June sometime. Uh but for a variety of reasons, it didn't get done, and we're still hoping that we have enough time before the snow flies to get this place sold. Uh 'cause we do need the money. So I I don't know if this little additional triangle here is is you know the fly in the ointment or
I believe that you know the engineer will have to draw up like a Mylar and just create and move the lines and then it can be recorded properly.
Okay.
So I think that's the next step.
Okay.
Is to have the plan, you know, reissued into a Mylar and then.
I just thought it seemed to be appropriate before we went to that next step that we did this. Hopefully it's the right move.
Sure. Right.
So that would be just go to a Mylar, come back, have you guys have sign.
Yeah, have the engineer, you know, get all the points and everything and all that and.
I we've we've got everything I believe there, if you know if you're looking at it, 'cause that is that is truly
Yeah. So This this is yours?
That's mine, that's correct.
Oh, so there's no one there's no one really ran out of this?
No, this is this is all like we're talking about that field, right?
Yep.
And then
Yeah, so really it's just this little area.
This is all we changed because of their driveway was what's what's happening here is is I'm purchasing that, I'm purchasing this and
Yeah, too many new new subused people started parking here.
Sure.
He's technically buying that triangle for me, so.
And reducing wise to take your own problem.
Out to yourself.
Yeah, because his driveway, when this property was first subdivided.
Mm-hmm.
Originally it was a one car driveway and just water.
Nobody of course realized when that was until we started doing all of this and realized that you know they're parking cars right on that triangle and we wanted to get the triangle done with good neighbors instead of who do we know who's gonna be the neighbors, so.
I mean I don't understand, it's been a an issue, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
He said you do it before you're you're putting it on to sell it, so you know it's
That's what I'm saying, I I I wanna give him that piece of property now so it's not mine, so he he's got a better valuable piece of property so that the driveway isn't cut in half.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And uh at the same time, I I've deeded it to him, so I don't have to worry about it in neighbor either, so.
Yeah, gotcha.
And we've done a lot to the house. We had the septic system checked out, there's new water lines, we've really updated the house, so whoever gets it's gonna have a nice house.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So that's not a public hearing, we can just bring the Mylar?
I don't I don't think so, I don't think so.
Just be on on record definitely coming in here with Mylar.
It's still not really.
Yeah. That's right, on sound away.
So.
Similar to what we got there.
Yeah.
That has to be recorded.
And then that gets recorded.
Yep.
Yep.
Excuse me, I wasn't gonna take that home anyway.
Dave, if you just got any questions, just call me, Skirin, Unishka, we'll get ahold of us or whatever, you know.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are pure great folks, man, so.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting me on.
Okay, uh so now we're just gonna move down, Frank is here, we're gonna move down to Dalton Terrace um considering um this information with the water loop down at his property, down at uh Dalton Extension. Hey Frank, oh yeah.
I believe it was asking for your verified and opinion on the engineer. I s well I I don't know if you have a hold, I have a letter from uh SciTech. And uh y I can read it through the 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 whole thing or just can summarize it, but whatever you like. One thing that I learned with SciTech was that uh you can use the two ways of uh finding out if some water line works or not. One way it's the rule of thumb, one is the other way it's the to the calculations. And they said that what Ben at the D E W did was the rule of thumb and the water does go path of resistance and and they confirmed with the calculations that the the water the real water loop, you know, could be required. And it doesn't really serve any purpose. Because it would just behave as one pipe rather than two pipes, you know, it's not gonna behave any different differently. And the the according to D E P the further explained, because the you know D E P requires the alternative analysis and the alternative analysis that shows that the 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 small water loop will not be required. You know, if you want me to read it through the record, I would like to, but
No, I
That's true. Did did um the engineer, our engineer, get to respond to it?
I think this is Sean's letter he
But that was before.
That was before, so we haven't heard anything.
I didn't respond to this one yet.
We haven't heard anything from Sean yet, you know.
Okay, that's the thing.
You know.
So what
How much more delay on this, it's been two months now.
So So I I think I think we definitely need to, I mean we asked Sean originally to to get a response from him and we haven't had a response from him, so I think it's I think it's I I don't wanna hold you up, Frank, but maybe we ask Sean to s have him take a look at this like yesterday.
Yep.
And 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 get get something back to you this week too, Frank, alright? Um I think that's, you know.
This one's given to him two weeks ago.
Yeah, you know, I mean he's got other jobs and everything too, and there's a holiday involved and you know um so let let us let us let let us get something to view by the end of the week if if that's possible. Um so we'll ask Sean to have him review um these items here um and then have him get it back to you hopefully by, you know hopefully by Friday.
But in order for us to get the right information, Frank, we have we have to see his response to SciTech. It's only right, you know.
Give me the calculations.
We're not trying, what's that?
Give me the calculations, you know.
I
I know, but we still need to hear from our engineer, just uh if he agrees or disagrees, that's all.
No, most likely he would disagree.
Okay. So yeah, so we'll 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 ask Sean to
I know, Sean. It's the board that has to make the decision, you hear this side, you hear Ben's side, you hear the SciTech side. I I don't think it should be any further than than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'll you'll hear from us you'll hear from from us the end of the week, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Kinda go from there. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank, Frank, Frank.
And now we're moving on down to um property down on Union Street, one forty five Union Street. Um they're looking for a change of use from um I think it's is it Freina kitchens, is it that property?
Yeah, there's a retail cabinet that expires soon.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, uh this is very informal.
Yep.
Uh my name's Rob Pellegrini, I'm an attorney in Bridgewater representing the owner. Um he came to me uh shortly after he had lost a potential fire on the land. That fire wanted to um basically convert the use there from what it is today to a self-storage. And uh he lost that because of the zoning there, he probably wears residential. So I called uh Dan Mordardian, we talked, and he suggested I call you, but um you know what I pointed out to him is I think that um forty A allows um for the planning or zoning board to make a finding to a a non-conforming use. Saying that the proposed use is um less detrimental det dentre detrimental to the neighborhood than what is there today, which clearly this would be. There's obviously a a couple retail facilities in there with some, I'm assuming significant traffic. This would be self-storage, which basically sits there and waits for somebody to come pick up their thing. Um so obviously there'd need to be a finding and that's what the board would need to do, but he just asked me to come get some direction from the planning board. In the meantime, you know, I got a little history on this. The building was built in in the nineteen sixties um when it was zoned industrial there. It was rezoned in the seventies to residential, so it's a legal non-conforming use. Um I uh took a copy for you if you're interested in forty A, section six, and I even highlighted the applicable section there. It's actually one sentence. I'm just sure you've seen this before, but I handed it on to you anyway, just to get your opinion, your collective opinion, I guess. And Again, this is informal, but information never hurt anybody, right? And then, so what that says is um you know pre-existing non-conforming in this case uses may be in this case altered provided that the alterations shall be uh permitted, shall not be permitted unless there's a finding. Uh which is what I mentioned before, that it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And then I it also in some of the case law, it references your bylaw and that that's important and it must comply with this section. So fortunately it does. Um five point five on there sort of mirrors the language of the state statute. Soon we have an attorney here and you don't wanna say this, right? There you go. Um and uh that basically mirrors it, it does point you to the Z B A. But I was asked to come to the planning board and I've learned to do whatever I'm asked to do, so so that's what I did. I just wanted to know if you've ever, the court has an opinion about the change in use that I was um presented with? And maybe if you'd support this cause going forward to the Z B A in a non-binding way.
Yeah. Yeah, we be being as far as, you know, informal session and everything, you know what we're I think a little bit concerned with is is kinda like the spot zoning.
Yes, this is not a reason. Um this is simply a finding that the Z B A would make in your case. Just saying that the change in the use um is 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 gonna be permissible because it improves the impact of the neighborhood. There's no, yeah, I agree with you. If I was coming to ask you for a zone change, that would be a question that I would come about, yeah. This is more uh we already have something non-conforming and we know that and do know that, but we're trying to make it
Grandfather, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting, interesting uh very interesting, 'cause we do have a lot of non-conforming parcels in town.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah, and this is just an avenue for the town to allow it to improve without getting fallow. I've used it frequently, I've been a zoning lawyer for twenty years and
Mm-hmm.
Um it's definitely something I think it it's kind of a win-win. It requires the town to say, we agree this is gonna make it better. But at the same time, it's really not fair to make somebody rip down what they have at houses just 'cause they're with a reason, so it seems like it's a real problem.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments on the board?
I'd like to sit on it for a little while and and digest it um and maybe we could get back to you folks.
Sure.
And you know just and I think you would for us, I think it's just a matter of thinking things through, one. Two, getting maybe some other advice, how it might affect us down the road in other areas and everything like that. Um but yeah, I mean I don't I don't have a problem with, you know, having you, you know, if you want to come back at our next meeting and hopefully we have
Yeah.
you know, a little bit more answers for you and kinda go from there.
Sure. Sounds very
Um
Unintrigued.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, you you I know it's informal, but you hate to kinda say something and then kinda wanna
Preach and require.
You know.
Yeah.
No problems, I get it.
So um
When is the next, Jerry?
It it well, it's just an informal, like you you
Yeah.
we have you invited back to our next meeting.
You, yeah.
Um and I don't think we've we haven't really scheduled one, um 'cause we really don't have other items, but
Yeah.
I mean we could, we we should probably meet in in like two weeks anyways, just even even for Frank's situation.
Right. Yeah.
Um and ob- obviously your situation here. Okay. Alright, well we can do another day if it's, you know, um you know, we should have just said next two weeks. That Tuesday might be tough for her, so I mean w we could
That's fine, we can do Thursday or Sunday.
Wednesday or Thursday or whatever is is good for the rest of the board, so.
Sure.
Um do we wanna set our next meeting at this point?
Well, we know Frank's gonna wanna be back, so.
Um the biggest one on the agenda now is is South Franklin Street, we have to finalize that.
Yeah, we'll have to come back next week.
We have to vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can have a vote on it, yeah.
We do? Okay.
I can do next week.
So let's um
Is that two weeks?
'Cause I think I think the twenty the twentieth is the next Thursday.
Yeah, we actually have time till like, you know, that's all in Sunday, which is the twenty first, but we w I mean the twenty third, but we wanna have this at the clerk's office no later than Friday morning.
Let's put these folks on for um two weeks, even though we we might have a quick meeting on just to get that
Okay. Yep.
our um other issue resolved.
Okay.
Thursdays would be Thursdays are tougher, I think, but
Okay, so let's try that Wednesday, Wednesday, twenty sixth.
Yeah, so
Sunday's it's 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 my
Let's try that Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, twenty sixth.
Wednesday, the forty sixth?
Mm-hmm. Right.
So Wednesday the twenty sixth, but we gotta meet before that.
Here next week.
Oh, that's
Right?
Well, we need to have a meeting next week anyways.
Right.
Next week.
Right. Put that on the street line.
Right, so why don't we why don't we look at that right now too?
What about
I can do Tuesday next week.
Tuesday the eighteenth, that's next Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
But then I think I know somebody's using this.
Yeah, and there's another I have I have another meeting, so if it's just them, that's gonna be um
Maybe.
let's if we can just keep it
Yeah.
just um 'cause it'd probably be another quick meeting.
Yep.
Um if we could do it at seven.
At what?
Like the next Tuesday.
Okay, we can even meet in Inspection Services.
Yeah, 'cause it'd be a it it
About home day after the kitchen.
That's fine.
Well, I well, I know that there's another meeting that that night there, I think.
Yes, there is, I I know, yeah, it's capital improvements maybe or something like that.
No, there is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not um the economic, I think. Um
What about Wednesday?
Wednesday.
But what about what about in that little table, it's just gonna be us.
Yeah, we can.
Why don't we meet in the planning room office? It's not, it's just that we're gonna be discussing that one topic.
Right.
And then we'll we'll kinda go from there. So why don't we have that meeting in in that room then?
Okay, so we so Sean ought to get his feedback by Friday, his review by Tuesday?
So Yeah, why don't we ask Sean to come on Tuesday also, so that we if we have any other questions, you know what I mean?
But don't we wanna uh send him this first?
Or
Well, we want we we wanna send him um
The draft.
one s one seventy seven information like yesterday.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Maybe he gets back to us on Friday, and why don't we have him show up to the meeting on Tuesday just to kinda um
Sure.
We should have sent the comments to us prior to
Yeah, that's what we'll we'll
to review and then
we'll we'll ask Anishka to run you know, any drafts, you know, by the Tuesday.
So if he sees something that jumps our level
Right.
or we can be in advance, maybe make modifications before Tuesday.
That wa that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So see you guys on the twenty sixth.
Sixth.
Okay, and seventh.
Okay.
Good, thank you very much.
And it'll be that will be here.
Okay.
Okay. And
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh What other um so that's any other, oh, the new business, Anishka, that we have, or any
Yeah.
Anybody on the board have anything else?
No, I only think
I have a question on on so this request that we just received. Kinda gotta go through this a little bit here, but it seems to indicate that the Board of Appeals would be his final arbiter on this, so is it
Yeah.
what would be our
I I think that's where they're looking, they're just looking for some direction.
Okay.
So maybe that's for something, you know, of like a um yeah, I think we just need to look into it a little bit more.
Okay.
You know, as far as, you know, it I just feel like see there. Thank you. I if you let that happen, what else is gonna happen?
Well, is it gonna be a public vote, because it's technically a residential zone, now they're trying to change the use of it?
Right. It it might have to go in front of town meeting, you know, and that's
That's what I'm saying, so it could have to go against multiple levels before
But Right. Yep, so it might be it might have to go to like the town warrant and then a town meeting, you know, gets voted on and and it goes from there.
Good.
But it's just something else that um you know, I don't know whether we have Zabowski, I mean um what's his name, yeah, the zoning?
Zabowski.
Zabowski, look a peek at this.
Right.
And kind of get his thoughts on that, you know.
Because the ruling, it's gonna fly, it's not gonna fly just technical in the body area, but it grabs all of it, uh
Co- it's gonna It's Right.
The other thing is it's free for all.
So it's not now, it's Exactly, now it's
Yeah.
But it's
You may have a a few rentals that are in that building. So
But once you would zone that, all of a sudden, ten years don't lie, that goes from being self-storage to whatever. But once you would zone that, all of a sudden, ten years down the line, that goes from being self-storage to whatever.
Right. Now
Now your residents sitting right next to them with their homes going from a pipe to building
Right.
into now to maybe
Right out of it, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
Plus the house.
Right. So. Okay.
Interesting language, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Um but I mean I feel like you can find anything that can
Yeah.
'Cause our our zoning rules and regulations are kind of dated.
Yeah.
So you can kinda find anything.
Yes, you can find loopholes, you depends on which angle you wanna look at it, right?
Right. You know, so um Okay, so anything else that anybody else can say?
Well, uh we're gonna send these So I review these numbers real quick. It's all about, it's all about flow demand, not thing about non-flow demand, which is what the loop is serving the purpose of.
Yeah. Correct.
So the loop is when there's no demand. All these calcs are based off demand. So the, that's not the problem, the demand usage is is the
It's fine, right, right.
it's fine. It's gonna be when there's no demand, when everyone's not home, the water's sitting.
Right.
The guy or the girl or the family at the end of the run are not demanding that flow.
Right.
That section is gonna be, so the question is if they put this in, now this is the last house built on that development. You're not moving water through that section of pipe until who knows when. So the loop actually keeps that water trickling
Right.
so that when there is no load and demand, you still don't have stagnant water.
Right.
So I really would be interested to see what Sean's intake is on this because when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at numbers, it's all based on demand.
Okay.
I wanna know what Sean's thought is about the non-demand. Will this be enough flow on an everyday basis to keep that pipe from being dirty wild like we'll say it has to get flushed out every
Right.
year or five year.
Well, it seems to me it keeps asking for an alternative study, like doing something different, but
Mm-hmm.
how is eliminate, I don't get that eliminating is is an alternative.
Right, he tries to claim the little SciTech letter is is one of the statements it makes on the second page is that uh this represents an alternatives analysis, the alternative would be running the line through the wetland and that would be sort of more detrimental than the hydraulic improvement is negligible, I think it says and so that, or it's claiming, I you know, I'd like I'd like to hear what they said, what
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
what Sean's take on it is.
Yeah, 'cause this is all the bad.
I think they're proposing that this SciTech letter is the alternatives analysis and
But they they still no alternative, it's it's the loop, the loop through the wetlands was the plan.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the, you know, you're not gonna jack up and go go underneath and and protect it and do all that stuff, so what's the alternate loop? They still haven't pro- provided an alternate plan besides remove it.
Right.
Which there is some, there is some background.
But D E but D E P is not is not saying that they can't go through the wetlands either.
It's conservation saying you have to come up with a different plan, D E P saying you need the loop.
Yeah. Right.
So it's two different parties saying you need it, you can't go here, provide another option, that option is still hadn't been provided.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Just calc saying that when there's a demand, we're gonna have enough flow.
Right.
Or when there's no demand.
So is the wetland portion of this the only place for this loop to go or
To not add probably a couple hundred feet of
I don't know, I have to see the point.
I mean, that's uh my question.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, an alternative would be turn if we put a loop someplace different and off the wetlands.
Right, but that would bring them further downstream and it would be further to get them back to Westdale, you know, to make that connection.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that if you went further up the street
The only other way would be and it'd be going through other properties to make it, to make a loop on somewhere else.
But somebody said, I don't know, a couple weeks ago that you can go underground too.
Yeah.
You can go under the wetlands.
Yeah, they did in another area. I think the last meeting someone said they they jacked it under the wetlands, protected it, went down deep enough that it wasn't an issue.
And that's been done before.
Right.
And that and that was was to
So But you never know, there's there's a cost factor too here, you keep
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Right.
I did read, there is money, so I mean that is another factor that
Yeah.
So what's good about it, um you know, we're gonna ask Sean t- to come Tuesday and we can discuss
Yeah. Yeah, after the
demand, no demands on some of these issues here, so that that's a good thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um And
We're just gonna, we're gonna send him that before though, right, just so he has both documents, just so he
He's, we're gonna send him, we're gonna send him that, like
I have to double check if I did and I sent him already, 'cause I believe when I sent you guys, as soon as I got it, I think I sent it to him.
Okay.
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 I'm gonna double check, if not, I'm gonna just send it out.
So
Make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second, Sergeant? On favor?
Right.
Thank you.